I declare the ordinance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda of the organizational meeting of the Board of Education Central for Wednesday, April 12th. All in favor, please? Aye. Motion carries seven zero. You're gonna, Dr. Marty has a presentation, I guess.
We do. We do. Good evening, everybody, board members, and public who are gathered here for this organizational meeting. We're gonna start this evening by taking some time to bid farewell to two outstanding Board of Education members tonight, Dee Mogermin and Chris Jacob, who have served our community and our school district for a total of twenty-two years, Dee for thirteen years, Chris for nine years. I think that math is correct. They have been a part of so much that defines Parkway today: the development and implementation of Project Parkway, the development of Parkway's guaranteed curriculum, successful Don campaigns, the recognition of schools of character, Blue Ribbon Schools, AAA Bond Radio, APR Achievement in the High Nineties, a school district of distinction in multiple years, high ACT performances and scores, especially when we were ahead of the state in implementing ACT for all, full day kindergarten, elder reform, we could go on and on and on, but that's certainly very important, at least in part of my tenure and certainly before me. Both have served with multiple superintendents and administrators and many board peers. All these illicit achievements are truly remarkable, but even more remarkable are the leadership traits, character, and service of both Chris and Dee. They are true servant leaders, whose mission as board members was to ensure all Parkway students received the absolute best instruction and care possible, and they modeled and expected the best efforts of each other, as well as all board members and leaders in the district and all educators in Parkway. We shall never forget these insistence on Project Parkway's mission, compliance, the compliance policy, and use of data in making decisions, and most importantly perhaps for all of us, Dee's historical perspectives, and that contagious laugh of these, or Chris's passion for the fine arts, and his never-ending humor and goodwill, and just as remarkable leadership in tough times and tough decision-making. Both Dee and Chris love Parkway deeply, and they've shown that, and they have invested long hours, attended over fifty board meetings every year, board functions, I should say, each year, plus extra activities, plays, events, and celebrations. The superintendent and this superintendent's action team that has gathered want to salute you with a gift as a token of our appreciation, as well as reminder of your dedication and outstanding service. We thank you, we wish you the best, and we love you deeply. Thank you very much, we are going to miss you. So on behalf of the district and those of us here, we have some gifts for you. We'll let you open them if you want, or, while we're doing that, board peers, we decided I was the spokesman, but I know each of them would like to say something, because we're limited. But anybody on the board want to?
I don't know if I'm worth it. Debbie? Mrs. Mogermin was my mentor, and we both ran at the same time. I was with both Dee and Chris when I first got elected, so it's been particularly difficult for me to see both of them leave when we ran together and we won together. Mrs. Mogermin was assigned, as I say assigned, maybe you chose to be my mentor, and I couldn't have been better suited to have somebody with your historical perspective to fill the gaps and give me all of the history. You did a superb job, and I only hope that we can continue on doing the same for our newest board members and these current mentors as you were to me. And for Mr. Jacob, I elected you, I nominated you last year for president for your second term, and, you know, our friendship goes beyond the school board, I think we all can say that. We've got to marry the need for here, we're good friends, even though we're on the board, and we can talk openly and honestly, and we cherish that, that we can have open dialogue. We don't always agree, but then we can come back together and say, yep, we did our best, and I think that's what we've done. And you have had the heart of our kids in every single decision you've ever made, every idea that you brought to the board, and every, just every, you've been there, you've been at everything, and I just encourage you to stay there and continue your work on the foundation for the early childhood committee, early childhood center. You were key in getting our Parker Panda Bear at Build a Bear Workshop, and that's going to be a legacy for this district, so for that, thank you very much for all of your services.
You said it again. Debbie just said, I also want to say that Dee has taught me more about process and procedure when it comes to holding board meetings than anybody I've ever known, and she definitely keeps us on that. No, but you do it in such a charming way, it's a gentle nudge of, excuse me, aren't we supposed to do this? So it's been a tremendous learning for me as well. And Chris, you were my Yoda, Chris was my mentor, and I always called him Yoda, because he taught me along the way of where I needed to be, what I needed to do, and what did he just say? So he is, he taught me a lot along the way, and I remember, I recall, you know, late at night, what does this mean, what do I do, and am I doing things right, and he was always, always there for me, and always took the call, even if it was ten o'clock at night. I appreciate both of you, and I appreciate your dearly.
For me, it was the first year, but both Dee and Chris, they have been great mentors, and you know where I can learn, but the position that they are in is not something simple to get in, I mean, to be honest, they know exactly how tough the situations are, but, you know, coming new on the board, especially for those who are going to be there, they have done a fabulous job of helping me maneuver through, answer questions, making sure that we follow all the procedures, and thank you for being there and supporting me, which I really appreciate.
Dee and I, though, about seven years, I was at Big Cedar Lodge, and at that time it was a vacancy because of a reservation, and I applied for it, and I was just so excited about it. And I was told I'd get a call and be informed about the decision, and consequently, I'm sitting there, the phone rings, and Dee very apologetically said, Sam, I, you know, we decided on someone else. And then she kind of felt she had to explain why, and she did, and I understood, I said, I can deal with that, but she said, you've got to run for the board, you just have to do this, and she gave me an encouragement, and Dee, I truly appreciate it, because it's been such an wonderful experience. And the experience of working with you, your smiles, your friendship, your kindness, you're keeping us straight and doing what policy tells us to do, but that's an important part of it, but it goes beyond that, because you care so much about kids, and you care so much about working as a team member of the board, and working with the team of teachers and administrators and all, and it's made such a difference. You've made such an impact that you'll never realize, but it's certainly there in every way. We're gonna miss you so much, you're a special friend, and it's been a special time to be with you in this capacity, and hopefully we'll be together in other capacities as we can as well. And Chris, it's been, I don't know if I can echo anything beyond what you've all said about Chris, but Chris, many, many times, and I've taken a lot of meetings with him, opportunities to be together, and it's always about the kids. He always says it's about the kids, and that's why we're here, and Chris, you mean that, it's in your heart, you live it, bless it, and it makes a difference, and what you've accomplished over the years, members of the board and presidents of the board, has been very special to all of us, and especially the children that live here, and all of us have a chance to work with, too. You're just definitely amazing, this past year I worked with Chris a lot as vice president, I kind of felt I didn't have to go all the places that he went, but I wanted to, because of Chris, I wanted to be there with him, and it was a very special time. I enjoy your jokes, and I'm gonna continue sharing your jokes in the future, because I'll see you all again. Thank you both so much.
Chris, you and I were new board members together just a few months apart, even when we ran for election and I got appointed, we learned the ropes together, and eventually we became a leadership together, and as your vice president, I've learned so much, and Debbie flipped, and I had Jay by my side, making sure I did everything my way. I appreciated your friendship and your wisdom, and I especially appreciated, you're beautiful. You're very special. You guys, this might be a few, Dee, you were also my mentor, let's see, how many of you have got your own? Dee and I had to know each other two ways before my time on the board, the first was through our PTO leadership, she was PTO leader, she was always there, and then I led PTO leadership, and she was always there, and then together, as a team, we worked on a bad issue together, I couldn't tell you which one, it was the first one when I was on the board, before I was on the board, before I was on the board, we worked community outreach of jails, and we worked very well together through that, and then when a vacancy opened up on the board, you were so encouraging for me to try out for it and to apply, and for that, I was grateful. And then I was appointed, and then I was sworn in, and then the floor. Taking this back to October 2008, the board faced one of the most difficult decisions, or difficult times that we've ever faced, and as you, with you as my mentor, we really learned how to get through that, and stay together as a team, and do the right thing for kids, and I learned so much from that. And we've had tough, rough times over the years, all of us, we've made difficult decisions, we've tired up hard, we all worked so hard on that, and I think we can all sit back and feel comfortable in the decision we made all those years ago, through all that hard work, and the district definitely would not be here at this day without your work, without your work. So, with that, we will be friends forever.
Thank you all, this is wonderful, you all know how I feel about each and every one of you in this district, and for those that don't work closely with the people here, they are the most kind-hearted, giving people, they really do have the best interest of the Parkway students in their hearts, it's just been a pleasure, I'm gonna miss all of you. Mrs. Stover, I don't know what I'm gonna do without your texts, and your predecessor, Carol Koyan, is here, which is very special to me, Carol kept me on the straight and narrow for many years until she retired, so thank you both, and to my fellow board members, thank you. Oh, and I have to say, my husband, too, thank you for all the years of my absences and dinners and anniversaries and birthdays, whatever it is, whatever it was, but thank you for your patience and your interest.
Well, Dee is a remarkable, remarkable board member and woman, and I think that the only thing where she exceeds more is as a mother and as a wife, and it's just been wonderful to serve with her during these last nine years for me, and to see the dedication never stopped, right up to the end. I want you to know that I'm taking up donations from my presidential library. I'm kidding. On a much more serious note, I think I'd like to congratulate Christie and Todd for their election to the board and for Debbie's reelection, and to serve the community in this capacity is a real honor and a privilege, and I know that Dee and I feel that very deeply. I'd like to thank the constituents for keeping me on the board for three terms, it's really been a sensational experience. I'd also like to thank students, teachers, and principals in the various schools where I maybe attended some business thing that we had to do there, or just some of the functions that were fun to attend in those situations, also to the staff and the administrators who always did everything they could to keep us as a board informed so we could make better decisions. And I have to thank Dr. Marty, our superintendent, for his leadership and friendship, and I'd like to thank also my board colleagues, what a privilege it is to know them, to serve with them, and see how they conduct themselves, their commitment is close to the limit, I mean, it's just amazing, and I do appreciate them very much. The two things I'm gonna take away from here that mean the most to me or the most precious, one is the memories of all of those experiences and two, the friendships that have kept me along the way, so I thank you very, very much. Thank you so much. I'm gonna turn it over to Sam to read the results of the election, and then Dr. Marty will lead, conduct the rest of the, the next part of the meeting.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and read the annual school board election results. Robert Gore, 2002, 3.81 percent, Anne Marie Puhin, 3,523, 6.70 percent, Chris Jacob, 4,715, 8.97 percent, Peter Messenger, 2,316, 4.41, Deborah Hopper, 7,924, 15.07, Matthew Ecklerly, 4557, 8.67 percent, Kristy Klein Davis, 6,275, 11.94 percent, Dee Sopia, born Latin, 6,025, 11.46 percent, Zeg Coford, 3,177, 6.04 percent, Della Overkane, 4,817, 9.16 percent, Jeff Todd, 7,023, 13.36 percent, and it was a write-in of 209 votes, 4.40 percent. Dr. Marty?
So as the results have been read, it is my pleasure to issue certificates of election to the successful board candidates, they are once again Debbie Hopper, Jeff Todd, and Kristy Klein Davis, congratulations. So 7.0 on the agenda, Mrs. Stover is wanting to swear in our newly-elected board members.
Right hand, repeat after me, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director in and for the Parkway School District, County of St. Louis, State of Missouri, to the best of my ability, and according to law. So, yeah, congratulations.
We'll take care of nameplates during the break, we'll proceed with, continue on with the organizational meeting. We will now move to the election of officers, and we'll start with the election for president of the Board of Education for Parkway. Do we have a nomination for president?
Beth Feldman, Beth has been on the board for many years now, and I think three of which were as board president, and so she definitely has that down, she's been very engaged in the district in issues, and she's very dedicated to the success of all children, so I'd like to nominate Beth Feldman.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a nomination for Beth Feldman, is there any other nominations for president? Seeing none, we'll, we have a motion and a second that the Board of Education elect Beth Feldman as president of the Parkway Board of Education for one year in term, commencing tonight equals, that April 12, 2017, and ending April 11, 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Alls? I think we have Mrs. Feldman as our board president. However, proceed with.
Next, we're gonna do 8.02, election of vice president, are there any nominations?
Kim is a longtime parent in Parkway, her both sons attend at Parkway, one's about to graduate, the other graduated a couple years ago, this is her first term on the board, second term of the board, and her last year, the second term later. And I sat next to Kim in a lot of, in many meetings, and I know where her heart is as well, she cares about kids, she cares about Parkway, it's been absolutely wonderful and helping us to make the right decision for our students and for our district, and on that account, I'd like to recommend her for vice president.
Is there a second? Are there any other nominations? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And ten, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the organizational meeting? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We're gonna take a short break, just about five minutes or so, thank you all for attending our organizational meeting.
We need to figure out how we need to change the plates?
We have them here.
I don't know that we can.
Yeah.
That must be.
we ran for election and I got appointed, we learned the ropes together, and eventually we became a leadership together, and as your vice president, I've learned so much, and Debbie flipped, and I had Jay by my side, making sure I did everything my way. I appreciate it, your friendship and your wisdom, and I especially appreciate it, you're beautiful. You're very special. You guys, this might be a few, Dee, you were also my mentor, let's see, how many of you have got your own?
Dee and I had to know each other two ways before my time on the board, the first was through our PTO leadership, she was PTO leader, she was always there, and then I led PTO leadership, and she was always there, and then together, as a team, we worked on a
Yeah, but there might get cut off.
Good thinking, Jim. You got it.
Yeah, but I would say it's discouraging.
I said, "I'm going to unlock the door." You guys want to leave, go back in there. He just told me to yell at that.
I have the key to the office. So don't stay, keep it under control. I will be gone. If you're looking for me, I'm in there.
I understand.
Oh, by the way, you just got some more.
We could never miss that.
Mason Brooks talked about how he had to go back, and you were talking about how... I had a short video up on Estream about how Mason used to work with something out of the office. Just, you know, to make your work in an illegal... That didn't want you to be a...
Yeah, I don't need that.
Yeah, and that's what my gap was. My gap was like...
Hey, after 90 seconds is...
Good evening, welcome to our first board meeting of 2017 Board Calendar. I'd like to invite everyone to join the Board in the lunch committee.
The United States of America, and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call please. Here, closed session, call for closed session, there is none. Special recognitions. I'd like to call on Jason Brooks, Technology Support Advocate Award. I'd like to call Patty Beckeroff, our CFO, who's going to talk about Jason Brooks. Kindly would like Jason Brooks to join us down here at our tables. Tonight, I would like to present to you the award winner from the METC Conference for the Technology Support Advocate, Mr. Jason Brooks, our Director of Technology and Innovation. This recognition and honor is won for school personnel who have demonstrated exemplary technology support and advocacy for implementing best practices in technology in the areas of digital safety, infrastructure, and network security to increase global connections and authentic experience for all learners. Congratulations.
Yeah, I can say a few words. Thank you, Patty, and thank you, School Board. I quote one of my favorite people in the world I've learned a lot from, Desen. It's a pleasure to work at Parkway because we've got really good providers. Every day is a great challenge. I get to work and surround myself with great people. And it's just, working with the people here at Parkway, the students, the teachers, the parents, the community, it makes my job seem really easy. So, I mean, really, this may be what I received, but it's just because of everyone that's here tonight and all of our students and parents. So, thank you.
Dr. Lisa Meredith is going to come down now. Good evening, I would like to invite Bill Bass to join me at the podium. So each year, the National School Board Association's Technology Leadership Network, the TLN, announces a 20-to-watch honor raise. These education leaders from across the country are being, or are recognized for their ability to inspire colleagues to explore and embrace innovative technology solutions and instructional strategies that contribute to high-quality learning experiences for students. Bill Bass is one of this year's 20-to-watch. Missouri actually had two people in the top 20-to-watch, which is a great honor, I think. Bill was recognized April 3 in Chicago at the COSIN Conference. And this is what they shared about Bill during the recognition. Bill Bass? William Bass, I'm sorry, let me get it official. Innovation Coordinator for Instructional Technology, Information and Library Media in Parkway School District. Among his other systemic considerations to the meaningful adoption of technology, Bill defines equity as access to content, access to equipment and devices, and equity of the experiences students will have in a classroom. He keeps an eye on the future through the Innovation Playground, a research and design space created to investigate new products and approaches. I think many of us have seen things that have come from that Innovation Playground. Those of you who were around at Project Parkway or at the Board meeting where we had the little spiro's that you were trying to drive around. Yes, those started in the Innovation Playground. Some of you have seen the 3D sandbox that can be used to teach topographical concepts and social studies. That came out of the Innovation Playground, as well as many other things. Bill is definitely impacting the use of space in our classrooms so that we can provide learning experiences that help our students achieve mission. And Bill, we are so thankful for your leadership and your advocacy for equity for all students. You are taking Parkway to new places. Thank you.
So I guess for me, I just really appreciate the support of the Board and the entire Parkway community as we have been able to try things that, as I go around and I talk to different people around the country, they are in awe of what we're doing. And all of that is basically... It's such a great place to come. I've been here for the last 10 years, and it has exceeded everything that I thought I would, might do as an educator. And I'm just proud of the work of Parkway. So, thank you so much.
We're next, we're going to hear next from Abby Belling, our Coordinator of Career and Technical Education.
So, we don't have the students here today, but they will be receiving certificates signed by Dr. Marty Wong. Thank you, and I just want to say a few words. So, experiential learning is something that is quite the popular buzzword in education. We hear it mentioned in the news, online, in articles that we read. And in career technical education, experiential learning is something that we've been doing for quite some time. And it's something that we do for our co-curricular organizations. And so tonight, I'm here to tell you a little bit about those and some of the amazing things that our students are doing. Career and technical education is an area where students can use these co-curricular organizations that they can transfer their knowledge in and out of the classroom in real-life situations. Organizations such as DECA, Association of Marketing Students, FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, Pro Start, which is aligned with the National Restaurant Association, the Technology Student Association, as well as our robotics teams, Project Lead the Way, and other organizations are ways that we have boasted Parkway students into amazing means. These organizations have supported our students in a relevant personalized educational journey and helped them to learn life skills such as passion, grit, toughness, and the skills that they need to succeed in a global economy. Tonight, we are here to tell a little bit about these students and what they've done. And FBLA, we qualified 23 students for our state competition. This is a double from 2016. We also qualified over 60 students for our DECA State Career Development Conference. We have two that we're sending to Nationals in Anaheim at the end of April as well. We additionally had three culinary Pro Start students who took first place in the National Restaurant Association Competition this past month in Springfield. And our teacher from North High, Becky Bright, will be taking them to Charleston at the end of this month, which is awesome. And in CTE, we also welcomed one new co-curricular organization called Virtual Enterprise. This organization we have at South High and West High. And we sent students to the New York Virtual Enterprise International Career Development Conference for the National Business Clan Competition. One of our students was able to win $10,000 while she was there. So, in terms of the continuum of experiential learning, I feel very positive that we are providing our students with the opportunities to succeed. Last but not least, I do want to mention we have 14 students from this building at Central Middle that participated in the State Technological Student Association Rolex Competition and did very well. I just want to thank you all for your support for these career and technical education programs. It would not be possible without your all's support, Dr. Marty, and the people that are standing behind me. So, thank you so much, and we look forward to continuing to boast the great things from these students. Thank you.
Believe it or not, we've come to the time for another very quick break. This one's only going to be about two or three minutes so we can let the people who just come to that presentation get on with their evening, so we can maybe just pop them in. Thanks for coming back so quickly. We're going to start with 6.0, additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. 6.01, addition of Agenda Item 13.03, policy review of JK.BEP's student discipline. And 6.02, addition to Agenda Item 11.08, approval of personnel items. Next, we're going to get to 7.0, citizens' statements. Since we have so many tonight, we are going to give everyone one and a half minutes to give us their statement. And we ask that if you have your statement in writing, please hand it to Mrs. Stover, our Board Secretary, at the end of the table, and she will share those with all of us. And we hope that everybody will be respectful of the time limit just because we have important things to get to in our meeting tonight. We want to hear from each of you, and then we want to get on with our meeting. So, our technology people are, I've got the time posted for you so you can kind of keep track of where you are in a minute and a half. So, I'm going to first call on Jim Bcheston, and I'm going to ask each of you, come on down, I'm going to ask each of you to give us your name and your home address so that we may reply in writing.
My name is Jim Bcheston. I live at 725 Ridge Side Drive. It's in the Ballman-Van Chester area. I am a resident of the Parkway District. I come here at Knight Express to our thanks for the dedicated work you do for the district here at Parkway as a concerned citizen. I also want to comment on an issue facing the district as you deliver rate of finances, budgets, and curriculum for the next fiscal year. In particular, I want to publicly express support for the best choice curriculum to remain in the Parkway School District. Why is that? Well, for one thing, the curriculum teaches and equips students with the methods necessary to make responsible life decisions, now and later in life, and it has also recognition of those consequences. In contrast, the comprehensive curriculum does not accomplish this goal. In contrast, the comprehensive curriculum does not accomplish this goal. It does not recognize that the decision one makes has consequences. Thank you for the time to speak. I also ask you to use those critical thinking skills that I know that Parkway is well-known for in your curriculum evaluation and scrutiny as you make these decisions. And I think in conclusion, I would just like to thank you for the time to speak here. This is my first time, and hopefully you all have a, you know, good idea of where we stand, so. But I obviously, and look down to nine seconds, but I would like to say too, you know, as we have different points of view, I would ask that we all listen and consider all the different points of view. So, thank you very much.
My name is Debbie Swiger, I live at 932 Brookfield Avenue. We have four kids currently attending the Parkway School District. Two of them are at South Middle and two of them are at South High. We moved here three years ago and specifically chose the Parkway District because of their willingness to have programs such as the Best Choice Program. We're very supportive of the Best Choice Program and have heard nothing but positive remarks from those who've gone through it in my kids' school. This is not a morality-based education, and there's no references to religion or faith in the curriculum. My junior at Parkway South has been through the program, is impressed, he was impressed and pleased by what he heard, and said he felt no pressure or shame put on anyone in attendance based on any past decisions they had already made. I feel that Best Choice is a positive, abstinence-based education that should be, continue to be presented in the district. Thank you.
My address first. Hannah Alley, my address is 4005 McDonald Avenue, St. Louis, 63116. Thank you to the Parkway School Board and Dr. Marty for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Hannah Alley, and I am a 2008 Parkway South graduate. After Parkway, I continued my education at Hendrix College, completed my master's in social work at Washington University in St. Louis, and today I continue my career working with leaders in greater St. Louis to improve outcomes for kids. I'm here tonight with my friends from West County Community Action Network, also known as WE CAN, to congratulate and welcome our newly-elected and re-elected board members, Debbie Hopper, Jeff Todd, and Kristy Klein-Davis. WE CAN began and has continued to hold weekly Black Lives Matter vigils since Michael Brown's killing in 2014. Since then, we've continued to grow and deepen our efforts in the areas of policing, voting rights, responding to incidents of racial violence, and most relevant today, school discipline reform. WE CAN's school team, with direction from the Ferguson Commission's report, began its work with a call to eliminate suspensions for pre-kindergarten through third-grade students, which disproportionately affects students of color. Since then, we've learned about the many ways Parkway is addressing this issue and that there is still much work to be done. We know that change takes time, and districts are under ever-increasing pressure and scrutiny. We commit to be patient. We know that school districts cannot be successful alone. We commit to being your partner. Most importantly, we know the urgency felt by students and parents of color in Parkway schools, and because of this urgency, we commit to being your partner.
All right, how y'all doing today? My name is Javon Baker. My address is 2080 Norton Florsin Road, Florsin, Missouri, 63033. And I have the privilege to serve as program manager of the Thrive St. Louis Best Choice Program, sexual risk avoidance. And my tenure began with Thrive almost six years ago as a guest speaker. Over the past six years, I personally spoke to thousands of students that have participated in the Best Choice Program with great success, even in the Parkway School District. Like you all, we at Thrive have a profound passion for our commitment to the young peoples of greater St. Louis. And our incredibly successful Best Choice Program has been a powerful expression of these values. We now stand stunned and deeply hurt by the recent weaponized disinformation campaign and justly being waged against us and you by radical NARAL now and Planned Parenthood activists. The slanderous accusations of medical inaccuracy, lack of transparency, and evangelization in public classrooms have been deceptively forged and advised of political aggression, completely fabricated, and now proven false. The behavior and comportment of our detractors display contempt for absentee education, even for adult sins, and mole law. The rhetoric is shocking, bullying, hate speech laden, and discriminatory. This aggressive bullying and harassing strategy has now targeted school boards and administrators in an attempt to bend them to their radicalized will. This is very wrong to do and difficult for these community leaders to withstand. As a group of skilled and well-respected credentialed professionals, the Best Choice Program provides thoughtfully developed education, powerful options for life mapping, and medical information that is accurate.
My name is Mandy Bounds. My address is 452 Prospect Creek Drive, Ballman, Missouri.
My name is Lindsay Diler, 2231 West Street Drive, St. Louis, Missouri.
I am the LEAD VC, our Best Choice presenter. I was asked today to type up some survey comments from the students who took the survey from Parkway South High School. I did personally teach that class. I was going through the surveys today. Whether the students answered yes, I'm not certain, or no, or waiting till marriage, they did all say yes, this program has made me make healthier choices. That is my goal as an educator. I know we're not supposed to pick favorites on schools, but Parkway's are some of my favorite schools to teach at. Your students are so much fun, and I love them. And I hope you know that I would never want to shame any of my students, and I love having them come up and talk to me after class. So here's some of the comments that I typed out that Lindsay is going to share.
Yeah, so I'm also a Best Choice presenter and taught in Parkway School District as well, so I'm very appreciative and proud of that opportunity. Some of the comments from the students, it's very awesome to see what they have to say about the program. Will this presentation help you make healthier decisions regarding your sexual behavior and explain? So some of them say, yes, I don't want any STIs. Yes, yes, yes. Yes, I know the consequences of sex. Yes, be more careful with having sex when I start deciding to have sex. Yes, I'm aware of the dangers. Yes, I have never had sex without protection. Yes, I learned that an STD can be prevented, but not 100%. Yes, it opens our eyes to the long-term effects. Yes, the presentation was very informative, and I very much enjoyed it. Another question on the survey is what information for the presentation was most valuable to you, and please explain. So some of the answers are STIs can still be transmitted when using a condom, and that I'm always at risk of contracting an STI unless the other person has never had one. Information about how easily viruses, bacteria, et cetera, can spread and prevent pregnancy. Even if you wear a condom, you can still get an STD. Everything was very interesting, and presenter was interesting. Most valuable information was about being loyal and respectful to everyone and your partner. Would you share what you've learned in this presentation with a friend? One of my favorites was, yes, I actually have a friend who is sexually active, and I want to try and ensure to get tested. Yes, I feel that the more people know, the safer they can be. Yes, my friend can use the information for future activity. And yes, I want to present this to my friend to be safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies. Next, Sarah Manoj.
Hi, my name is Sarah Manoj, and I live at 2556 Westland Estates in the home town of 6304, 6043.
This is Amy.
Amy Ansbach. I live at 820 Wishwood Court, Chesterville, Missouri, 63017. Longtime Berkeley alum.
I'm the center manager at Thrive St. Louis in the North County area, and I'm here to support our Best Choice Program. I wanted to address some concerns that some people have shared regarding that program as well as Javon you addressed. We have things taken to develop our curriculum to be fully compliant with state law and aligned with the most recognized in the field. The program is 100% medically accurate, and all data has been taken from sources like the CDC. Our staff is licensed medical professionals, physicians, and registered nurses who carefully review our content to ensure its accuracy and trustworthiness. The Best Choice Program curriculum is built on a firm, scientific, medically sound foundation for the public school setting. In regards to curriculum and faith, our Best Choice Program for public middle and high school is completely siloed program. So essentially, Best Choice has its own offices, its own staff, its own website, its own Facebook page, et cetera, separated from our faith-based entities. There are no references to religion or faith. Our centers, our medical offices that we provide services to, tactile medical services, and the white hospitals, believe that faith plays a role, but it is something that our clients get to enter into a conversation, it's never something that is forced, seemingly in compliance of their job.
And I'll just tell you about how Best Choice is funded. Private Best Choice programs are supported through a variety of funding streams, primarily funded donations and foundations, but a minority portion of our funding is received for city and state. Thank you, appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Celeste Hennett. I live at 4153 Chapel Ward, St. Louis, 63110. I just wanted to come up here again and thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity to speak tonight. As, talking about the Best Choice Program, I'm a Best Choice presenter, and the Best Choice Program works, it is an outcomes evaluated program with significant results as recognized from a social science perspective. Students exit our program less likely to negatively impact their children through school-aged sexual activity. They're equipped to set healthy boundaries and more likely to have a discussion with their parent or guardians about sex, a key goal for the sexual risk avoidance education. The evidence for positive impact is overwhelming, and the program is wildly popular with students, parents, and teachers. The Best Choice presenters are effective with our students because our sexual risk avoidance presenters are passionate, high-energy, highly-trained, and skilled facilitators. They live the lifestyle themselves, and their authenticity and knowledge build a powerful bridge between challenging, this challenging subject and our students. Additionally, the curricula are scripted and invented by licensed medical professionals to ensure efficacy and consistency. Thank you.
Next, Carol Williams.
My name's Carol Williams. I am a free resident. I am also a nurse at Thrive. My address is 998 Claygate Court in Winchester, Missouri, 63021. And what I'm going to do is read a letter that was actually written by Dr. Sherry LeFever. It was written March 8th of this year. So she says, to women concerned, my name is Dr. Sherry LeFever. I am American Board of Obstetrics and Gynecology certified. I am an associate professor of obstetrics and gynecology at St. Louis University School of Medicine, and director of older and vaginal disorder specialty center. I have received the Women's Health Research Award for the National Association of Nurse Practitioners in Women's Health, as well as the National Faculty Award for Excellence in Resident Education, Council on Resident Education in Obstetrics and Gynecology. I was just recently asked last week to help review this Best Choice curriculum for medical accuracy. I have never seen it before, and I will have to say, after reviewing it, I was very impressed by it. Every medical fact, especially as a sexually transmitted disease section, is backed up by a credible source like the CDC. The Center for Disease Control has always been an entity that speaks the truth in medicine using evidence-based medicine, not anecdotes or anything. I did not find the curriculum to be faith-based, but found it to be a good, secular, medically accurate education.
Hi, I'm Ally Goodman, 12240 Spring Place Court, Maryland Heights, Missouri, 63043. So my name is Ally Goodman, I'm a registered nurse, and the nurse manager for Thrive St. Louis Medical Clinics in the Central West End, and I'm licensed in the state of Missouri to offer patient care. I'd like to express gratitude to the Parkway School District and Board for allowing Best Choice Program to be taught in your school for several years, so students can benefit from a high-quality sex education curriculum. I'd like to communicate to the school board that the Best Choice Program is medically and scientifically accurate, fully compliant with Missouri state law, and aligned with the most recognized authorities in the field. The program's 100% medically accurate, all data has been taken from sources like the CDC, the AMA, the Department of Health and Senior Services, the FDA. We want to let you know that Thrive has various licensed medical staffs, such as our medical directors, our volunteer consulting physicians, our medical regional manager, they have to review the content of the Best Choice curriculum, and continue to review when updates are necessary to ensure its accuracy and trustworthiness. The Best Choice Program is built on a firm, scientific, medically sound foundation for the public school setting. Our medical regional manager has had the responsibility to make sure all medical directives, standing orders, medical information provided by Thrive's board-certified medical directors are implemented according to the best practices, standards of excellence by all our medical professionals as we serve and empower the women in our community. Besides our well-respected physicians, we have a practitioner.
Hello, my name is Austin McCartney, and I live at 9756 Avenue Hills Lane, that's in West Hill, Missouri, 6335. I am a guest speaker with the Best Choice Program, and this is my second year. And one of my favorite parts about my job is hearing feedback from the teachers of the classrooms that we speak in. And so I just wanted to read you some of the things that the teachers have said about our program. Having a fun, engaging speaker, the kids responded very well to her. This was my first time inviting the program into my classroom. I have heard great things about it, but I am impressed. The slideshow was engaging, presenter was awesome, and relatable to the students, and activities really made the kids think. I will definitely keep utilizing this tool in the classroom in the future. This was a teacher at McFlure High School. It went well. I not only thought it was good, but many of my students have made comments about Best Choice being their favorite class. That was a seventh-grade teacher at Barnwell Middle School. I appreciate the fact that you don't tell students that sex is bad, but it can be if it's with the wrong person at the wrong time. I like the fact that you push making the best decision and smart decisions. That was a teacher at Parkway South High School. The program gives students important information to help them make informed decisions when the time is right. That was a teacher at Fort Smith North Middle School. It is information that discusses, covers what my students deal with daily, another voice that encourages them to do the right thing. My kids had a lot of questions. That was a teacher at Live for Life Academy.
Good evening, my name is Matron McAlone. My address is 8822 Shade Room, St. Louis, Missouri, 63136. You all may have seen or heard a call from the Thrive St. Louis president that was deceptive and alleging her of her support for the KKK. I am here to give her a statement. So on behalf of Bridgette Van Means, the president of Thrive St. Louis, reads, "Thank you for all your support and confidence that you have expressed over the last few days and weeks. As an empowered woman of mixed race and African-American descent, and the president of a racially and culturally diverse organization, I am infiltrated to learn that a small-town paper heavily deceptively edited and therefore misrepresented comments recently made during an event at Jefferson City Capitol. This was then turned into a tabloid-style advertisement op-ed by Post-Dispatch, which was paid for by radical political activist group called..." overwhelmingly positive, and the Best Choice Program deserves to be measured based on facts and performance, not a handful of politically motivated activists or hecklers or hecklers veto. The program is 100% transparent, 100% medically accurate, and has had stellar reputation and performance outcome. Notable is the fact that everything we've said about our program has been validated as true, and yet everything these activists have said about the program has been proven to be maliciously deceptive, activists motivated, and hate-based. Thank you for making a fair and objective decision to continue the program based on its merits. Thank you so much.
Megan Castlebury.
Good evening, my name is Megan Castlebury. I live at 12931 Barrow Drive, St. Louis, 63146. Thank you for allowing me to address this, this is the first time I've been in a school board meeting. I am a Parkway resident, I have three little boys, two who currently attend McKelvey Elementary, and I'm very impressed with everything they have been teaching. I believe McKelvey serves as a school of excellence and of good character, also of self-restraint and self-control. I would like my children to receive that education as they enter their middle school years and their high school years as far as sexual risk avoidance. I am also a registered nurse, I have been working and currently still work for 16-plus years. I have taken care of patients personally who have encountered sexually transmitted illnesses and diseases, and have very, very poorly. I would like my children to have a strong curriculum that supports them and their sexual choices, of course, but also something that they can see that the CDC clearly lays out this is the best option for you as far as your sexual health and your psychological integrity. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Ron Hall.
My name is Ron Hall. I live at 550 Conway Village Drive, Town and Country, 63141. A 23-plus-year resident of Parkway School District. I serve on the Board of Thrive. It's been an honor to do that, and as such, I make a point of trying to know as much about what's going on as possible. I personally attended Best Choice classes in schools, and I've talked to teachers both inside Parkway School District and outside. The comments I give are very positive relative to the Best Choice curriculum and the opportunity for their students to hear from a source that is very dedicated and specifically trained in that area. I will also say that I did comments about, from teachers about their concern about having to teach certain things in the curriculum at Parkway that they're not comfortable with, but that's their job and they try to do it the best they can to meet, that's still to meet their moral position. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and encourage each of you to attend classes, talk to teachers, and get an informed position before you have to make decisions. Thank you.
Danny Demeter.
I'm Danny Demeter. I live at 13006, St. Louis, 63146. I'm sure that all of us in this room consider ourselves to be good people, no matter who we are or what we do, but all of us know that things, situations, and events in our moral country, and even in our schools, are not as good as they should or could be. In fact, a lot is just plain man. The threats that make up the fabric of the Best Choice curriculum are in themselves good, sound, just, righteous, ethical, and moral. With this being said, I humbly urge the Board, not the teenage parents, and all concerned citizens to attain the Best Choice curriculum for years to come in our Parkway school system. Thank you.
Bill Durbin.
Good evening, I'm Bill Durbin. I live at 600 Claymont Estates Drive, which is at the boundary of Parkway West High School. I was fortunate to have three daughters graduating from West. I was extremely impressed with the education they received back in the 1980s. I'm here tonight not to talk about what so many of the other speakers have discussed, but I am here to support Thrive. I had the pleasure of supporting them with my time and my treasure. I'm extremely impressed with the work they're doing. I've lived here for over 35 years. My wife and I vote, and we were very careful to do our research before the recent election, and we voted for school board members. I'm happy to say two of our three choices got elected. One other thing I wanted to mention is, as you deliberate the issue of what we've been talking about, I think Christie should consider recruiting herself in those deliberations because of her membership in this organization, exposed Thrive, which is out to destroy an organization that's doing a tremendous amount of good.
Helen Webb.
Hi, my name is Helen Webb. I live at 424 Grassland Drive. Parkway has become known as a positive learning environment to all families. Last month on the front of this booklet was an Indian student. This month, there's a young African-American student. This reputation is at risk in two ways. The first is bias. Due to new Missouri laws, the school-to-prison pipeline, if not mitigated, will hurt our schools and the diversity that we do have. Please support initiatives where principals, security officers, and police departments work together to protect minority students and all of our students. This includes having standard discipline policies across the township. Bias based on race, religion, or gender is harmful to all of our students because it undermines trust, curiosity, and respect in the schools. Second threat is from politics. As long as Thrive is in the schools, it will bring controversy, religion, and religious politics, and division to our community. Political groups like the anti-gay mass resistance Missouri got involved in our recent election. This is not what we want for our schools. This is not what we want for our students. We want happiness, curiosity, growth, and education. Thank you very much.
Joan Stuller, 1841 Chelmsford, St. Louis, Missouri, 63146. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. At the last Parkway board meeting, I counted six citizens' statements that directly stated faith-based groups should have no role in the district. There are at least as many statements that implicitly criticize faith-based organizations by concerns about the issue of whether faith should be a discriminator when selecting outside resources. When bringing in any outside organization or individuals, the district should, of course, have a solid understanding of what is being brought to the students. But the faith statements in the group are not a reasonable or practical basis for bargaining from providing a service the district is seeking. I encourage careful consideration of the establishment, free exercise clauses, and personal amendment, and the benefits free exercise brings to us. Many religions put forth an ideal term for others, the sick, the unbound. Caring is a word in the Parkway, the Parkway District recently added to the mission statement. Should this reference be removed from the mission statement? Many faiths put forth an ideal not stealing. Should the district stop enforcing rules against theft of districts or student property? Many religions have a healthy respect for science. Should the district stop teaching genetics because of Greer Rendell's involvement in the field? Should the district deny a Methodist mother who is an active youth minister for her Methodist church from being a servant leader on the PTO board for our daughter's school? What trajectory will the board set for the district? Thank you.
John Cannon.
My name is John Cannon, and I'm a 1979 graduate of Parkway Central. I live in Century Lake Drive in Chesterfield, and have lived in the Parkway School District for 40 years. My wife and I have three children, all of whom are in their early twenties, and I'm here to support Thrive. I believe our teenagers have become jaded and confused on the subject of human sexuality. Every single aspect of popular culture is teaching them one thing, and their conscience is or are telling them something very different. We want to pretend that we can be morally neutral when it comes to human sexuality and that there are no consequences, no repercussions for our behaviors. It's essentially the media message that our teenagers are hearing nonstop 27, 24/7 in all of its forms. This is fiction, this is not reality. The single, serial, lone jockeys are being number one and number two in leading the nation in gonorrhea and chlamydia. I can't think of another hot-button issue where we're required to be morally neutral. We aren't morally neutral in our teaching, drug education, we aren't morally neutral about bullying, we aren't morally neutral when we discuss racism, segregation, Jim Crow laws, slavery. And I can think of a host of other similar issues that were brought up in our social studies and history classes. In September of 1979, after I went away to college, I took a stand based upon the adoption of a different worldview. I decided I wasn't going to have sex until I got married, and from that moment on, I was able to keep that stand. I met my wife, a Parkway West graduate, in 1982. We dated for five years. We never had sex until our wedding night, which is in October 1987. This is a gold opportunity for the Parkway School District.
Michael Tiscala.
Good evening, Mike Tiscala. 14008 Baywood Village Drive, here in Chesterfield. A few points if I may. The first is to refute this ad, which has been discussed, which you may have not have seen in the last Thursday's Post-Dispatch. Okay, it insinuates that the president of Thrive, Bridgette Van Means, welcomes the KKK in her cause. Okay, this is meant for the ignorant, okay? Those of you who know her know she's black. Yvette Fine Baker is black, or 50%, the vast majority, the vast majority of the people who come to Thrive are black, and they support the KKK. It's ludicrous on its face. I say no more. The second thing is the backstory, which I sent you an email to the board members about a month ago, and I've got a hard copy for the new members, okay? The backstory here is money, okay? It took $10,000, $15,000, even at a cent grade to put this out. It's a lot of money. Planned Parenthood is dying on a vine, okay? And that's the backstory here, that's what it's about. For every woman that goes to Thrive under the letter from an organization, Planned Parenthood, this is $500,000 per woman. At $1,800 for an organization and $600 for Thrive, you're talking for $1 million per year. It's just the numbers. There it is. It's money, and that's what it's about. Thank you.
May I have the non-ful and bias set up? I want to know if there's no way out to keep your...
My name is Maya Saget.
I'll just go ahead and let you finish. Great, okay, go ahead.
My name is Maya Saget. My address is 14321 Wind Creek Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. My name is Eliza McGonigal. My address is 14222 Wind Creek Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017, and we are students at Thrive. We would like to talk about the change that we would like to make in no-food policies at Parkway in this grade. We know that this policy was set because so many people have food allergies, but the higher grade levels know what they can and cannot eat, so maybe this policy could just be set among the younger students. As food creators, we know our responsibilities. We are the most mature students in our school. We know how to be safe and healthy when it comes to food, and help is taught a lot in our district, and we are responsible.
There are safe foods to eat at our parties. For example, 7-Up is a good choice for drinks. It has no caffeine, it has a lot of, it has a lot less sugar than other sodas. Also, pizza is a great choice because it doesn't have our school's most feared allergy, peanuts, and students love it. Also, it is served in our cafeteria. Every day, we eat our lunches with peanuts, dairy, meat, and almost nobody has to use an FTM. So if we're allowed to eat the food from the cafeteria that they serve us, we could just get the same food we will be serving as at school, at the parties. All of the students are very loved us.
We don't think we have a better feel for why we should stop the no-food at parties policy. We would appreciate your sympathy and understanding of this. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Out of bounds. Our last citizen, Megan Joy Maxwell.
Joey Maxwell, 4621 Lee Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, 63115. Good evening, distinguished Board of Education members. I work as a program director at Thrive St. Louis, and I am the curriculum coordinator for the Best Choice Sexual Risk Avoidance Program. I have previously addressed you regarding the misinformation being spread regarding the credentials of our team. However, I stand before you today on a slightly different aspect regarding this matter. Those who have come against our program can deny it all they want, but this is an organized, weaponized disinformation campaign that is characterized by hate speech, professional pro-abortion activists, and is not parent-driven. As you will see in the social media posts I will share with you, the ring leader hates Thrive. She strategizes with professional pro-abortion organizations and activists. We have all become very familiar with the state statute regarding the provision of sexual education. I'd like to bring to your attention points seven and eight of that statute. No school district or charter school or its personnel or agents shall provide abortion services or permit a person or entity to offer, sponsor, or furnish, or in any manner, any course materials or instruction relating to human sexuality or sexually transmitted diseases to its students if such person or entity is a provider of abortion services. Now, one of the organizations connected with these activists has this mission statement, now affirms that reproductive rights are issues of life and death for women, not mere matters of choice, now fully supports access to safe and legal abortion. We oppose attempts to restrict these rights through legalization.
Okay, we'd be happy for your questions, thank you. Okay, I might take a very brief question without any of you who would like to go on with your evening to the part, and then we'll move on. Thank you. Thank you.
Most of you are up to it, like...
Yeah, and well, there's two parents in there that are looking forward to fighting anti-Thrive. And I'm just reading the comments, and it's silly. No, nothing. It's been set on a Ustream page. No, yeah. Yeah.
John Steller, 1841, Chelmsford. Saint Louis, Missouri, 63146. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. At the last Parkway Board meeting, I counted six citizens' statements that directly stated, "Faith-based groups should have no role in the district." There are at least as many statements that implicitly criticize faith-based organizations by concerns about the issue of whether faith should be a discriminator when selecting outside resources. When bringing in any outside organization or individuals, the district should, of course, have a solid understanding of what is being brought to the students. But the faith statement group did not have a reasonable or practical basis for barring them from providing a service the district is seeking. I encourage careful consideration of the establishment, free exercise clauses, and personal amendment, and the benefits free exercise brings to us. Many religions put forth an ideal term for others of war, the sick, noninbound. Caring is a word in the Parkway -- the Parkway District recently added to the mission statement. Should this reference be removed from the mission statement? Many faiths put forth an ideal not stealing. Should the district stop enforcing rules against theft of districts or student property? Many religions have a healthy respect for science. Should the district stop teaching genetics because of greater levels of involvement in the field? Should the district deny a Methodist mother who is an active youth minister for her Methodist church from being a servant leader on the PTO board for our daughter's school? What trajectory will the board set for the district? Thank you.
My name is John Cannon, and I'm a 1979 graduate of Parkway Central. I live in Century Lake Drive in Chesterfield and have lived in the Parkway School District for forty years. My wife and I have three children, all of whom are in their early twenties, and I'm here to support Thrive. I believe our teenagers have become jaded and confused on the subject of human sexuality. Every single aspect of popular culture is teaching them one thing, and their consciences are telling them something very different. We want to pretend that we can be morally neutral when it comes to human sexuality and that there are no consequences, no repercussions for our behaviors. It's essentially the media message that our teenagers are hearing nonstop, twenty-seven, twenty-four-seven in all of its forms. This is fiction; this is not reality. The single serial lone jockeys are being number one and number two in leading the nation in gonorrhea and chlamydia. I can't think of another hot-button issue where we're required to be morally neutral. We aren't morally neutral in our teaching and drug education. We aren't morally neutral about bullying. We aren't morally neutral when we discuss racism, segregation, Jim Crow laws, slavery. And I can think of a host of other similar issues that were brought up in our social studies and history classes. In September of 1979, after I went away to college, I took a stand based upon the adoption of a different worldview. I decided I wasn't going to have sex until I got married, and from that moment on, I was able to keep that stand. I met my wife, a Parkway West graduate, in 1982. We dated for five years. We never had sex until our wedding night, which is in October 1987. This is a gold opportunity for the Parkway School District.
Michael Tiscala.
Excuse me. 14008 Baywood Village Drive here in Chesterfield. A few points, if I may. The first is to refute this ad, which has been discussed, which you may have not have seen in the last Thursday's Post-Dispatch. Okay? It insinuates that the president of Thrive, Dr. Anne Meade, welcomes the KKK in her cause. Okay? This is meant for the ignorant. Those of you who know her know she's black. You've mentioned Fana Baker is black. Over fifty percent, the vast majority, actually, the vast majority of the people who come to Thrive are black, and they support the KKK. It's ludicrous on its face. I say no more. The second thing is the backstory, which I sent you an email to the former said about a month ago, and I've got a hard copy for the new members. Okay? The backstory here is money. Okay? It took ten, fifteen thousand dollars even at a cent grade to put this out. It's a lot of money. Planned Parenthood is dying on the vine. Okay? That's the backstory here. That's what it's about. For every woman that goes to Thrive with a letter from an organization, Planned Parenthood is five to seven hundred thousand, seven dollars per woman. At eighteen hundred for an organization and sixty hundred for Thrive, you're talking over a million dollars per year. It's just the numbers. There it is. It's money, and that's what it's about. Thank you.
My name is Maya Saget. My address is 14321 Wind Creek Drive, Chesterfield, Missouri, 63017. My name is Eliza McGonigal. We would like to talk about the change that we would like to make in no-food policies at Parkway in this grade. We know that this policy was set because so many people have food allergies, but the higher-grade levels know what they can and cannot eat, so maybe this policy could just be set among the younger students. As food providers, we know our responsibilities. We are the most maturest students in our community. We know how to be safe and healthy when it comes to food and help us out a lot in our district, and we are responsible. There are safe foods to eat at our parties. For example, Seven-Up is a good choice for drinks. It has no caffeine, it has a lot of -- it has a lot less sugar than other sodas. Also, pizza is a great choice because it doesn't have our school's most feared allergy, peanuts, and students love it. Also, it is served in our cafeteria. Every day, we eat our lunches with peanuts, dairy, meat, and almost nobody has to use an F and M. So if we're allowed to eat the food from the cafeteria that they serve us, we could just get the same food we will be serving as at school, at the parties. All of the students are very loved us. We don't think we have a better feel for why we should stop the no-food at parties policy. We would appreciate your sympathy and understanding of this. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Our last citizen state, Joy Maxwell. Joy Maxwell, 4621 Lee Avenue, Saint Louis, Missouri, 63115. Good evening, distinguished Board of Education members. I work as a program director at Thrive St. Louis, and I am the curriculum coordinator for the Best Choice Sexual Risk Avoidance Program. I have previously addressed you regarding the misinformation being spread regarding the credentials of our team. However, I stand before you today on a slightly different aspect regarding this matter. Those who have come against our program can deny it all they want, but this is an organized, weaponized disinformation campaign that is characterized by hate speech, professional pro-abortion activists, and is not parent-driven. As you will see in the social media posts I will share with you, the ring leader hates Thrive. She strategizes with professional pro-abortion organizations and activists. We have all become very familiar with the state statute regarding the provision of sexual education. I'd like to bring to your attention point seven and eight of that statute. No school, district, or charter school, or its personnel, or agents shall provide abortion services or permit a person or entity to offer, sponsor, or furnish, or in any manner, any course materials or instruction relating to human sexuality or sexually transmitted diseases to its students if such person or entity is a provider of abortion services. Now, one of the organizations connected with these activists has this mission statement, now affirms that reproductive rights are issues of life and death for women, not mere matters of choice, now fully supports access to safe and legal abortion. We oppose attempts to restrict these rights through legalization.
I might take a very brief question without any of you who would like to go on with your evening to the part, and then we'll move on.
Most of you are up to it like.
Yeah, and well, there's two parents in the game going anti-Thrive. I'm just reading the comments, and it's really, no, nothing. It's been set on a Ustream page.
But yeah, the main thing that's going back and forth here about how this is against the separation of African states and all of the pride people that are talking about Thrive.
The one dude that didn't seem Charles.
I understand that.
See, I need to do that one.
Because I'm not going to buy it.
We, uh, I think like the teacher relationship.
If you get that certain about place or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta show it out. Yeah.
He's like, I'm trying to think of something like when people don't communicate.
That's why.
Seth comes walking by, he goes, what you put on there? I said, lack of communication. He just started busting a line because that self-flagging is so true about this place.
I said, well, hey, we don't tell each other what's going on. Because I want to hear that. He goes, I would love to be a fly on the wall when they see that. I said, but the thing is, they won't be able to figure out who did it because everybody's going to be thinking that.
Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, yeah, it's, I, I mean, I can only even hear three months, but I can definitely see that there is a lack of communication someplace.
There's.
Oh, yeah.
Before we continue with our agenda, I noticed we have four of our part students in the audience, and I'm going to give them a spot, ask them, ask them real quickly, tell us who they are, what they're studying. Come on, come on down. You might want to hold that up for a moment. There you go.
Hi. Hi, my name is Amanda Taylor. I'm a faculty staff. I'm a regular at Missouri State and I'm in the Art Education Program 12. Currently, first I'm teaching learning. I'm at High Falls Elementary. I do classes there, and then on the opposite day, I do classes at my high school in drawing too. So I like kind of like help students draw and stuff.
Hi, my name is Shelby Wolschager. I'm a senior at Parkway South as well, and I am a support teaching learning program. I'm currently student teaching at Monhale Elementary in third grade, and next year I will be attending Maynorville University and majoring in elementary education.
Hi, my name is Samantha Ho. I attend Parkway North. I'm currently, I am in the Spark program as well, teaching and learning. I'm currently at Northeast Middle School, public with English, seventh grade, and I will be attending NAMAC in the fall.
Hi, my name is Abby Flicky. I'm a senior at Parkway North. This is my second year in the program, the Spark teaching learning program, and I will be attending the University Center of Missouri in the fall, majoring in special education and secondary mathematics. I am currently at Northeast Middle School, working with the math department in sixth grade and eighth grade.
Thank you. We hope all of you will give Parkway a chance when you get your degrees.
Eight point zero approval of agenda. We have a motion in the second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for April 12, 2017. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Resolutions nine point zero none. Ten point zero communications, like you, Paula, Dr. Keith Marty, Juju, those are due, and those, some of our new administrators.
Well, thank you very much. It's my pleasure, and we're going to have a few moments to meet some of our new administrators. Before that, I just want to take a moment, though, to welcome, it's always, for me, it's great to have a fellow superintendent who I really admire tonight. Dr. Curtis Kane is here with his wife, and I know you're going to meet a little bit. Superintendent of Westville. Thanks, Curtis, for coming. He's a wonderful peer, and I really enjoy his relationship a whole lot. I'd like Dr. Gina Pacini to join me now, please. As you know, in our superintendent's action team, we've had some reshuffling. We blame Desi Kirkjowker, he started this by taking off. He's actually at Northwest tonight. So if you notice, he's not here. He's at a board meeting in Northwest, which was important for him to attend, so we excused him. And of course, Dr. Watson will be moving into the deputy superintendent position, and it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Gina Pacini, who's going to assume the role, which the board has approved, as assistant superintendent for student services. A little bit about Gina. Four years ago, we had the pleasure of interviewing Gina for the principalship at Carmen Trails because we had an opening, and we had several wonderful candidates. But Gina, who at that time was a principal in St. Charles, really came to the, came to the top of our selection. We were so happy she joined us. She, at that time, and again, since we went through the process this year, presented herself as somebody who's got a wonderful, rich background. Many states, California, Texas, and Missouri, their background, principal, assistant principal, and much success all along the way. Someone who just really has got an attitude about mindset, the growth, the learning, and she's brought that through her work at Carmen Trails. At Carmen Trails, in her four years, she has both taken the school for new heights of achievement, but also turned the school into a school of character. Right now, on the virtual, maybe becoming a national school of character, we're waiting on that. When we talked to parents after we selected Gina for this role, we went down to talk about the new principal, all we heard was, we got to have a person like Gina, someone who works, works at models daily with enthusiasm, child-centeredness, and works on behalf of all students and staff and parents. One of my favorite stories about Gina occurred in the fall this year. Gina has, Gina speaks many languages, and I was at Carmen on the first day to school, and I could tell a parent came in a bit confused and a bit wondering where she should go. And Gina immediately left me and went to this woman who spoke, did not speak very good English, spoke Spanish, and Gina immediately began the discussion with this woman, and this woman lit up and was so proud that she could relate to Gina and her principal. And this is the kind of leadership that Gina has continually shown. I've been to cultural heights at Carmen, where, by the way, they have over thirty languages spoken, and Gina's led that, that effort in that school. It's really now become really a center of achievement, a center of character. In her new role, which she's going to assume, we have all the confidence in the world that Gina's going to bring all her skills, both from her office, her central office work that she has been involved in, as well as her passion for character education, and a real understanding of a bigger system, bigger systems of what we need to do to continually grow the student services department. And so it's my pleasure, and she's going to just say a few words to introduce Dr. Gina Pacini, our new assistant superintendent of student services.
Very, very nice of you to say. And so, four years ago, I stood up here, and I didn't realize that I needed to address the board, and so I just like I'm, I don't know what I say. So I'm not going to go on and on, but I want to thank the school board and Dr. Marby and all of my colleagues at Parkway for this amazing opportunity. I am so very, very proud of the work that we do in Parkway for the kids, and we've worked really, really hard at Carmen, not just, just bringing the kids along and working with the families and the community members, but in addition, I've been doing a lot of work with the school district and some of the committee work that I do. So I'm excited and looking forward to the future and some of the great, and continuing the great work that we have going on here. We have a strong mission, vision, and set of goals that I carried strongly through Carmen Trails, and I look forward to doing the same in this role in Parkway. Again, thank you very much, and I'm excited. Good luck.
Good evening, President Feldman and Vice President Applebaum. Board members, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stoper. I have the pleasure of introducing three new approved principals. And so I will first start with Tori Kane, who will be the next principal of Parkway North High School. Dr. Kane, will you join me? Dr. Kane has been an assistant principal at North High since 2013. Prior to North, she was an assistant principal at Park Hill School in suburban Kansas City, and served as the assistant principal for Lee Summit West High School in Leesup, Missouri. She also served as a science teacher at Park Hill and in other states. During the interview process, I had the opportunity to talk with students, parents, and staff, and read their feedback about Dr. Kane. So I want to share a few comments with you from staff and parents. Tori is an approachable leader who is confident and knowledgeable. She is a relationship builder, desires outcomes, and success. She is a caring, kind, loving human being. Tori understands what works and how to connect to students that span across cultures. A few comments from students. She understands the social, emotional life of our people, people our age, and wants to support us. Dr. Kane will be a voice for all. She is passionate about helping students in all ways. I like this one. She is put together. She loves the students in the school, and that's what matters. Tori is a respected leader in our community, and I so look forward to collaborating and partnering with her as the next principal of Parkway North High School. But before we welcome Tori, I would like to recognize two people here with her this evening. Dr. Jenny Markport, principal of North High School. And her husband, Dr. Curris Kane. From Board of Education, please join me in welcoming Dr. Tori Kane.
I have to adjust, I'm a little shorter. I would just like to say thank you for this opportunity. I came four years ago looking for a home, and Jenny Markport gave me that opportunity. And she welcomed me in, she brought our team together, she bridged us together and made us a family. And so I am honored to walk in her footsteps and continue to work at North and our community that love, our community love our students and love our staff, and I appreciate your support, and I'll be looking to work with all of you. Thank you.
Next, I would please to introduce Dr., Mr. David Duckworth, the next principal of Craig Elementary School. Mr. Duckworth? We'll be talking to her very soon. Mr. Duckworth is currently the principal of Crossroads Elementary School in the Wentzville School District and has served in that role since 2013, and was the assistant principal at Wentzville Supreme Tree Elementary School before accepting his current position. Prior to joining Wentzville School District, he was the director of Elementary Summer School and a K-five physical education teacher in the Addison School District. During the interview process, I also had the opportunity to talk with parents and staff and read their feedback, and I'd like to share a few of their feedback with you. From parents, I like his passion for diversity and fostering that diversity and supporting it. He wants to be here with us. He has a real passion for this job. From staff, he believes that social justice is essential, and he celebrates diversity. He understands the value of caring and the value of being a team player. He gives everyone a voice in decision-making. He finds value in finding the root cause of the problem, and he believes every student can and will learn. Before we welcome Mr. Duckworth, I'd like to acknowledge his current superintendent, Dr. Curris Kane, who has joined us. Not a coincidence or anything. Mr. David Duckworth is a respected leader in his current school community, and I know he will bring forth all of the talents that he currently has exhibited in Wentzville to the Parkway School District, and I look forward to partnering with him as he leads Craig Elementary School. Please join me. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Duckworth.
So, Dr. Kane, I know we really hadn't talked about this, but I just want to let you know that I appreciate everything. But I'm moving to Parkway next year. I do appreciate your support, and thank you, Dr. Kane, for being here. Thank you, Board of Education, I appreciate it. I'm very excited about the opportunity to come to Parkway. I specifically looked at Parkway because I believe in the history of the Parkway School District, I believe in the direction of the Parkway School District, most importantly, I believe in the people. Parkway is a moving district, and I appreciate that component. But more specifically, Craig Elementary drew my attention because of the community, a community that celebrates and recognizes diversity, and that's something that is core to me and what I want to be a part of. I've already had the opportunity to be introduced to staff and parents and have opportunity to be at a PTO meeting. They've been warm and gracious with their time and welcomed me there, and I can't wait to continue that. And, you know, I'm about every student, every day, and I know that that's the passion that they have in their building, just being in their building for a half-day, and will continue that tradition of excellence at Craig. So, thank you.
Okay, I am pleased to introduce our next new principal of Southwest Middle School, Mr. Aaron Pearson. Please join me. Mr. Pearson is currently the principal of Highcroft Bridge Elementary and has served in that role since 2012. Prior to his current role at Highcroft, he was an assistant principal at Carmen Trails Elementary here in Parkway. And he served for five years as the assistant principal at South Middle School. He began his career in 2012 as a director of vocal music at Northeast Middle School here in Parkway, and later joined the Central Middle School community in the same role. As you can see, he is returning to the work in working with adolescent learners. During the interview process, I also had the opportunity to meet with parents and staff and read their feedback, and I'd like to share a few of their comments with you. From parents, I liked his response to his role as a principal. He discussed it as being a facilitator and collaborator. I also liked his emphasis on relationships between students and teachers. He has a belief in character education. From teachers, I like his experience K-8. He has a broad sense of understanding. He knows where we're headed, and his experience at middle and elementary will be helpful. His philosophy really mirrors mine. Teachers and students have a voice. He has a strong character education purpose. Aaron is a respected leader who will lead Southwest Middle School to greater heights. Please join me in welcoming Aaron Pearson to the role of principal at Southwest.
I don't know whether I'm gonna get to make the mic this high tonight, so... Thank you, Board of Education, for your continued support. It has been a privilege to be, it's my 15th anniversary in Parkway this year, which has truly been a privilege to be in such a progressive and forward-thinking district for this long, not only as a teacher, but as a middle school administrator and an elementary administrator. And I'm excited to kind of come, as Dr. Watson said, full circle back to working with middle school students. I feel like I have had the privilege of working in the Highcroft community and learning about early education and learning about how students learn, and I can now take that, that learning back to the middle school with me to work with the Southwest Middle community and really have, I think, even deeper understanding than I did when I was back in middle school before. So, I'm very excited to get to, I've met the teachers, I'm excited to get to meet the parents next week at the community PTO meeting, and I'm just looking forward to a new challenge and a new exciting role at Southwest. So, thank you for everything you do for Parkway, and I'm excited to continue my work here. Thank you.
Good evening, and I will adjust back down. I would like to invite Dr. Patrick Shelton to join me. I'm excited to introduce a couple of new members to the TLA team this evening, and I'd like to start with Dr. Shelton. He will be joining the TLA team next year in the role of customized learning coordinator. Patrick comes to us from Hannah Woods, so somebody you're very familiar with. He has been serving as the principal at Hannah Woods since 2010. Prior to that, Patrick had administrative experience in the state of Illinois where he was a building administrator, and he also had the opportunity to work with federal programs and special education in addition to character education and some other important initiatives. In TLA, we are very excited to have the voice and the lens of a building administrator join our team. That will add a diverse level of thinking as we continue to collaborate in ways to best meet the needs of our students. Now, I've had the privilege of working with Patrick at Hannah Woods during his tenure there, and his passion for ensuring that each student achieves has certainly been a core to his work. He continually works with his teachers to problem solve around students who don't yet know, and to think beyond what is our traditional practices. He also is focused on what do we do to help students who already know. And within the past couple of years, really a stronger focus on supporting our students who are acquiring the English language. And sometimes our students have competing interventions, and so really working with his staff to develop a system to problem solve around students and prioritize and focus. So we're really excited to have that lens on our team. I am confident that Patrick, who will be partnering with John Barrow as our other coordinator for customized learning, that they will be a dynamic team that will continue to provide buildings with the support that they need as they strive to meet the needs of each student. So, Patrick, welcome to Teaching, Learning, and Accountability.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. You know, I came to Parkway seven years ago from a small district in Illinois, 850 kids, to literally the other side of education, and came in and didn't really know what to expect, and was excited to see that I had the opportunity to work for a district that puts kids first all the time. And you, as board members, have continually validated that belief. And so I'm excited to get to see what happens at the district level and help support that work to help make each child successful. So, thank you again.
I would like to invite Edward Madison to join me. I am pleased to introduce you to Eddie Madison, who will be serving as our new coordinator for health and physical education. Eddie comes to us from the Rockwood School District, where he has served as the facilitator for K-12 PE, health, and driver's education for the past six years. During his tenure in Rockwood, he has supported and led and facilitated all areas related to the curriculum, developing a guaranteed curriculum, working with the development of assessments, looking at best instructional practices. He has been highly involved in supporting the PLC process. I know that our STEM coordinators will be excited to work with him, as he has brought STEM to the gym in all of their elementary schools, right, in Rockwood. So we are excited to think about how we continue to grow our instructional practices within health and PE with Eddie's experience. Eddie received his bachelor's of education in physical education and then a master's in educational administration. And if he stays on target, we will be calling him Dr. Madison in December of 2018, and we are not going to let him stray from that goal. We will hold you accountable for that. You know, Eddie is going to be a great addition to our team. Eddie really has a mission, ensuring that we have a climate that is contributive to meeting the academic, intellectual, social, and emotional needs of students. Sounds like the whole child, which is what we focus on in Parkway, so that is a great addition. You know, Eddie sees himself even as an administrator, as a teacher, and a coach, and really has the view that it's important for us to view all students as learners and to understand the why when learning does or does not occur. And in his interview process, we heard that as a pain in all of his answers. So we are really excited to have that lens on the TLA team, and I hope you'll welcome me in, or join me in welcoming Eddie to the Teaching, Learning, and Accountability scene.
I was tearing up, listen. No, Board, Dr. Marty, thank you so much. What a great opportunity to join a great group in the TLA, the TLA Department, and just really looking forward to the opportunity to get out and, you know, continue to meet the rest of the TLA Department and get to know them, but also get to the buildings and the great staff with the Department and also the students. Had an opportunity to get out to four elementary buildings so far, and what a great experience. They were all welcoming, and I was actually, one of the students asked if I was the new building principal, and I quickly, quickly let them know that I was not going to be the new building principal, that I was going to be the new PE health coordinator. Just saying that, just feel really proud to be at Parkway and thank you for everything.
Wow, that's a lot of new folks. 10.02, welcome to everybody. Calendar meetings, the next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, May 10, 2017, beginning at 7:00 PM on Central Middle, and the anticipated closed session will be held at 6:00 PM. 10.03, board liaison reports. Anybody have anything?
The pleasure of having you, I was very fortunate to meet you, my son was living for college, but was still in the great array of meeting some of the folks that probably aren't here, and it was very nice. You know, I think I look forward to it and make some moves.
I'd like to highlight that this legislative breakfast was a wonderful opportunity to get to hear about some of the legislative matters that are going on and see what else is particular in all the other, in the surrounding area here. But also, in addition to that, was attending a number of orchestra, all district orchestra, all district concert, band events. And so, and actually, the all district band event is one that has not taken place for the past 15 years. And so, Mr. Wallace, Wes Ty, and Jeff Lackey and their whole team were really instrumental in getting that together. So, we really appreciate their efforts to keep the fine arts and the performing arts going here in Parkway, and the students are just amazing. It's just a great opportunity to see all of them performing in front of a large audience and hopefully keep their gifts and their talents going on in the years.
I just wanted to add to the all district honor band concert. The students were introduced and basically they were asked, how many of you are A-students? And 99.1% did that up. How many of you are national merit finalists? They all got up as well. It's just amazing, the relationship between music and academics and just being an all-around outstanding person. So we really applaud the arts, we applaud the directors and the parents specifically, and most importantly, the students who dedicate hours upon hours to performing, performing with their instruments and perfecting their instruments, along with being A-students and national merit finalists and just outstanding students all the way around. So congratulations to all of them.
I think the amazing thing they said, didn't those kids rehearse six hours that day?
They did.
Yes.
And it was free to Parkway because his travel had been sponsored, and so we, zero cost, we were a guest conductor to spend six hours.
Six hours these kids rehearsed that day. And not only that, I think the percussionists were told, within 45 minutes, to throw something together, because all percussion is not always a part of every piece of music. So in order for them to be able to show some of their talents, they were told, I think they were given like 45 minutes to put something together, and they did it, and it was just amazing. It was amazing to hear all these students come together from all the different schools and perform so well over the. I also wanted to mention about the legislative breakfast that was put on by Education Plus. We were proud of it, hosted at Parkus Central High a couple Saturdays ago. But the really great thing about the day is we had a phenomenal guest speaker, but after the speaker, we got to get up and experience about 25 or so booths that were put on by many of the district's overhead attendants, and we got to hear from students and teachers about the forward-thinking things that are going on. And not only was I proud to hear and to talk to our Parkway students, they were talking about their vibes, and they were talking about any number of things. I was learning so much from the students about biodiesel and, I don't know, I felt like I needed an interpreter to hear, to understand what some of them were saying. But the wide range of districts that were represented and represented was really impressive, and it shows me that there's something really important going on in each and every district in our area. So I was really proud to be able to be a part of that. So, thanks to Ed Plus for putting on a great event.
It did so well that they made that, I thought they had a great place for the breakfast. Ms. Stoper, I could just comment. I had my first meeting today in Jensen City as part of the, some of the new NSAP VI work of looking at doing accreditation and assessment, and we got off to good stuff. It's about 200 people that are part of various work groups. And my function is to help co-chair the oversight work. And I just want to say Kevin Decker was also there today, he's a member of the team, and I was probably seeing Kevin get selected. I think he'll be a great addition to the board, so, thank you.
Are you thinking about improving anyway, Dr. Marty?
I am a co-chair with Assistant Commissioner Chris Neil. And Kevin, what team are you part of?
Academic team.
Academic team, a good place for Kevin.
All right, thank you. For subcommittee reports, there are none. 10.05, upcoming subcommittee meetings, there are none scheduled at this time. 11.0, action items sent. May I have a motion to approve, a motion in a sec, oh, sorry, a motion to approve the consent agenda is presented in the April 12, 2017 board materials? Is there a second? Is there anything that needs to be pulled to action or closed?
It's kind of like to pull to agenda item 11.17.
Anything else? All right, so with the exception of 11.17, all in favor of approving the rest of the consent agenda. Any opposed? Okay, so all but 11.17, period 7, 0. And now, I think, will you call Dr. Meredith, Phil? Dr. Meredith, you need a permanent spot done here on the car.
Well, thank you. I hope to be able to take action to individuals so that we can, the approval approaches of the middle school health textbooks, which also includes our sexual education material resources, in the effort to be transparent to our community and to have open discussion and dialogue on the materials that are being used in our sexual education, in case you could, and I felt it was important that we just have open dialogue about this. So I did have the opportunity to review the materials. So specifically, what we're talking about is just middle school, the textbook that will be used in the classroom, and then supplemental magical booklet, and then the online subscriptions for students who take the class virtual or who need to reference the information, along with the teacher online resources as well. And I also want to just remind parents that they always have the opportunity, if they want to review any materials for that curriculum, to contact Dr. Meredith's office, and they are welcome to review those materials. In my review of the material, I know that it was presented at parent curriculum night, so all parents have so all parents have the opportunity to take a look at it and then.
That is correct. And I will let Mr. Ramspton talk about the selection of the whole textbook because this is the textbook for all of health curriculum. And then I will talk about the specific pieces related to the healthy relations part. So Ron, if you want to explain the process that you and your teachers went through to select the whole textbook.
First of all, I would like to make a statement that the textbook is not the curriculum. We have worked tirelessly on our health curriculum and so that's what the teachers follow. The textbook is a resource, always a resource for all curricular areas. And we spent over a year's time looking for the right resource, a text that students can use for those visual learners who learn through reading. And so, it took over a year. We weren't, honestly, there aren't a lot of middle school health textbooks out there. There's just not a market for it right now. But we did find two textbooks and we found several options online. And so, we, you know, we had vendors come in and present during development days to our staff. And we had a rubric which some of those questions were shared with you. And so, they gave us their feedback. We did offer the opportunity for principals to also provide feedback for the textbooks as well. So we also made them, as Harper, as you had identified, available on curriculum nights. We actually had two curriculum nights for parents throughout that year's time period. And so, there was an opportunity to view that twice by our community.
So when Ron and his team were selecting the textbook, we wanted to really consider the resources that would be in the textbook that were related to human growth and development and healthy relationships. And Ron and his team brought forward to me, and I took the superintendent's action team, whether or not we should have, this company will publish this textbook in many forms. And so, you can go through as a district and say, we want this chapter, this chapter, this chapter, and they will bind it based on that. Or you can buy each of them, if I'm right, Ron, individually as a module. And the teachers really felt like a solid textbook was the best option, plus financially, that was a little bit cheaper for the district. But after much discussion and consideration that Ron had with his teachers and then I brought to sack, the decision was made that the book that we get for all students in Parkway, and we're getting classroom sets, right, so not books for kids to take home, that it will not have the chapters on human growth and development or healthy relationships. So in this sample, that's chapter two and chapter 11, but in our textbooks, those will not be there. Instead, chapter two and 11 will be bound in this book. When the teachers get ready to teach human growth and development and healthy relationships, they'll pull this out and they'll use it in the classroom with students. So families who have chosen to opt their students out, when they have the textbook and they're learning about nutrition, or they're learning about safety, thank you, Ron, and they're flipping through, they're not going to see the human growth and development information because it won't be in here, but it will be available for the teachers to use for the students who do participate in that part of our curriculum. And I was really, you know, I was very thankful that Ron and his teachers brought that option. I didn't know that was an option with textbooks. And I think that's very responsive to our community and I thank Ron for that. So that is why we're doing a textbook and a module. Thank you for that. Had I not asked to review this, I would have known it's on plan. I very much appreciate a complete accommodation for our community. The last question is, are these, is this material to be used for this current school year or is this going to be for next year? So in our sample lessons for, and I'm going to talk just about healthy relationships and then Ron can talk about the, Ron, this is the publisher that we currently have in our resources, right? And so, we have referenced both books in our curriculum right now, but they're actually using the older books because we haven't purchased these yet because we need your approval to purchase them. But teachers do have sample copies of them that the publishers provided during the study and the, looking at the materials. So teachers might be referencing materials in it, but they don't have copies for students until next year because we can't purchase them until your approval. So I don't know if there's anything you want to add for the other?
No. The resource will be, if approved, will be purchased immediately, but will not be utilized in the schools until next year, next school year.
That's why at curriculum night, we had the older textbooks out too. They were both on the tables. Thank you. Great, thank you both very much. Thank you, Ron, for all your work on selecting these materials. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approves the purchase of a broad bill of education, middle school health, education textbooks, supplemental modules, and teacher resources, to include 350 textbooks, 350 healthy relationships and sexuality module booklets, 30 online student subscriptions, and 25 online teacher resource subscriptions for the total cost of $39,350.15 to be covered by funds allocated in the 2016-2017 L B E textbook matrix budget. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion period 7-0. Policy review 13.0. Tonight, we've got 13.01, JVC.VP student bullying. 13.02, JGF.VP reporting foul behavior and conduct by students and maintaining student records. And 13.03, JK.VP student discipline. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Fairall on these three policies? This is just the first read, we're not voting till we're in tonight. All right, let's get Mr. Fairall down here. Hello?
Hello.
My mic's gotten a workout.
So my question to 13.03, student discipline policy, JG.VP. Talking about on page four, the idea of striking under standard six. A student shall, this would be the second paragraph, second sentence, a student shall not inappropriately touch another person's sex organs or any other body parts. My question was, can we just strike the word inappropriately? Because it's just touching another's sex organs. Period.
Yeah.
Appropriate or not, sorry. And then another item on page five, under standard 10, possessing firearms and weapons. The very last paragraph where it talks about a toy gun or a gun replica. So these are basically fake weapons being brought onto the property. It says, however possession of any toy gun, gun or toy weapon or weapon replica is prohibited. And that's all it says. But what I'm hoping for is stronger language and we're tightening this up, that if that is portrayed to be real or is used in a threatening manner, that there could be some discipline. Because we all know that if somebody waves around a fake gun, there could be problems.
So delineating between just bringing on campus or to school versus using it to scale a threat.
Correct. Using it in a threatening manner as though it were real, that we have a little bit more clear than having gone through this experience before, that this language is just a little, it needs to be tightened up again, on making it a little more clear what happens when you do bring something like that and then using it in a threatening manner.
Clarification, process clarification, this is the first read, so we're not sure to talk about that.
Correct. So I'll take the comments and I'll go through a process that we've been using for the last two years where a subcommittee or character education action team will take the feedback and sort of blend it into this through the same lens as that we've done all the other work.
So my question is, do we, will we have a second reading before we vote on this particular policy? So on the other two, we'll vote on their approval at the May meeting, but on 13.03, we'll vote on that after we have a second reading in May and we'll vote on those two. And then the final question we have to do with under standard 11, posing a threat or harm to himself or herself, rather, it's a very percentage of students who, due to his or her prior conduct, either in school or away from school, posing a threat. And I was just questioning that, due to his or her prior conduct and how that should matter in, depending on their to harm themselves or others.
So it's an interesting standard because it's, the wording comes straight from Missouri statutes. So that, that first sentence where you say, student who, due to his or her prior conduct, either in school or away from school, it's very broad and it's vague. And this is also a standard that we rarely use in Parkway. But what it, what it does give the district authority to do, it gives us authority to address criminal student behavior that is not school-related and is not a safe schools violation if we feel it does impact school. So if a student does something in the community and there are criminal charges, probably felony charges, and they're not safe school violations, this standard does give us authority to address it from a school perspective if we feel it has a direct connection to school. So that's, so the wording in that first sentence is, that's connecting it to the prior conduct and where it says, either in school or away from school. So that's, that's one way to interpret that.
Great. Does anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Fairall? Right, and we'll do as we just mentioned, the first two policies in May and the third one in June. Let's see, 14.01, counseling program with great pleasure, I'm Dr. Aaron Schulte, coordinator of counseling, guidance and character education.
Good evening, President Feldman, Vice President Applebaum, members of the board. Dr. Marty, this is Stover. Thank you so much for having me. Just one point of clarification, I get one minute and 30 seconds for this report. Dr. Tyson isn't the only one with jokes.
Wait here, and before you start, since we have a couple of new board members, would you just give us a little brief overview as to how you got to today?
Absolutely, yes, I will, thank you. So for our program evaluation, we started about a year ago. We knew that this was coming. And we started with groups of counselors where we asked questions about, like, what do we want either people to know about or what do we ourselves want to know more about our program? We also, last year, went through the middle school, or, gosh, that was two years ago, went through the middle school study and counseling was a big part of that report. So we also heard from middle school parents, staff members, et cetera. So we kind of had a base layer to go off of, of questions that we knew our community members were asking, questions from our staff members were asking, and then as well as the counselors themselves. Then we supplemented that with questions from our superintendents. We supplemented that with questions from our counselors at the other levels and then also groups of, small groups of community members as well. So then we presented those questions to the Board of Education earlier this year in the fall. They added some and that is what I will mainly be reporting on tonight, the answers to those questions. And you also should have a copy of the entire report, which there was no way to report all of that to you tonight because it's already been a long night and I'm sure you don't want to hear about all of it in its entirety. So these are just the highlights. So again, my name is Dr. Aaron Schulte and I'm the coordinator of counseling and character ed. I am very excited to be here tonight and reporting on this. The purpose of a school counselor is to provide a comprehensive program that addresses students' needs academically, socially, emotionally, personally, and then also their career goals and needs. When I first went into school counseling, I saw this list of, man, we're going to help students in all of those different ways. And that's a pretty lofty goal. And I started off by saying that our counselors are some of the most wonderful people I've ever worked with. They are some of the most ambitious, student-centered, hardworking folks that I have come into contact with and we're really lucky to have all of them. They have a passion for all of these things, they carry that with them each day. I had the opportunity in my review to also go through the last time counseling was evaluated in Parkway. That was in 2009. And when I read that report, it was largely about what do counselors do and do our administrators know what counselors do? Do our teachers know what counselors do? And so, it was reporting on, how much do we need to tell people what we're actually doing? And what was really interesting for me to see in 2017, how much we've grown since then because I did not receive any feedback of like, what are the counselors doing? It was more like, what aren't they doing? They are busy all the time, they're supporting our students. And I think that's just such a nice view of where we are with it, that they are collaborative, they are part of the fabric of the school, they're supporting our mission and vision in more ways than we could even count. And I think about this specifically with the listening tour. We heard people on the listening tour say, a barrier for our students that gets in the way of mission could be social and emotional barriers. And I think that we're really lucky to have the counseling staff that we do, who helps remove all those barriers whenever possible. We do this through a specific structure, so we have four different parts to our program. The first one is our counseling curriculum. So that would be anytime the counselors are going into the classrooms, addressing the students as a whole group, they get to their entire caseload and they do this at varying degrees, at elementary, middle, and high school. Our individual student planning is anytime a counselor is working one-on-one with a student, whether that be to plan for their career goals, whether it plans for their academic needs, plan for their emotional health. Our I E Ps and 504s, the counselor involvement, and that falls into this category. Responsive services is anytime a counselor is responding to a student or family that is in crisis. So anything that comes up and they need to respond. The last part is system support. So as I said, I think our counselors have become more collaborative, more involved in the life of the school. So this is anytime a counselor is a part of a committee at a school or leading some professional development or any kind of fair share duty that everybody's doing, they're expected to be a part of that and they can and should be. Our national organization is called the American School Counselor Association, or ASCA. Our state organization is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, also known as MoDUSI, in case you don't know. They both set forth percentages of time that counselors should spend in each of these areas. We also, in Parkway, want to make sure that our counselors are within those realms. So each month, we have them fill out what's called a time and task analysis. For one day each month, all of our counselors document every 15 minutes of their time and where they are in each of these areas. So as you can see, I have the comparison of what the state and our national organization recommend compared to our average currently in Parkway, that's for this year's average. With curriculum, we are well below. That is in part, I think, because, and I'm sorry, this is at the elementary school level. We have different expectations for all three levels of counselors. As you can imagine, very different jobs at all levels. For curriculum, I think we are under in part because the counselors cited the need to balance the schedules of the teachers and their time, the students' time, and then their own time and all of the responsibilities that they have themselves. Individual student planning, we are above what we should be. And I think that this also goes into why we're below in curriculum as we at Parkway work toward a more personalized learning approach. That applies to our counselors as well. And we heard a lot from our parents, you know, I love that my, the counselor can meet with my student one-on-one for a lot of their issues or a lot of things that are happening for them. So it's appreciated by parents. So I don't know that it's necessarily a bad thing that we're above. I think that's kind of part of, part of what we're doing in Parkway, we're taking a more personalized approach in general and the counselors are part of that. With responsive services, they're right on, and system support, they're above. And I, again, think that's the collaboration that they, they do with all the members of the school. again, think that's the collaboration that they do with all the members of the school. For middle school, here again, we are below in curriculum. Our middle school counselors right now are guaranteed to go in and see their caseload three times per year, once per semester. Those lessons could be anything about career, it could be about a social or emotional issue, and sometimes counselors will go in and visit the classrooms more often if there's an issue that has arisen in their grade level, that they feel the need to respond in that way to all of their students. They are right on in individual planning, they're right on in responsive services, a bit above in system support, and again, I think that's a result of the teaming model that they use and the way that they collaborate with the others in their school. And finally, high school. Again, you can see the percentages, the expectations are a little bit different. We are below in curriculum. Our high school counselors are guaranteed to go in and see their entire caseload twice per year, once per semester. I'll say that their curriculum largely centers around college and career, and what is that next step after you leave us in Parkway? Individual planning, they are above, and here again, I think it's that personalized approach also, we're seeing an increase in 504 plan requests that counselors field and IEP meetings, and again, both of those fall in there. And again, they're right on target in responsive services and system support. So our departments are structured based on enrollment. So each elementary has either 1.5 or two counselors, each middle school has two or three, and each high school has five or six right now, based on enrollment. The board asked me during our preliminary conversation to comment specifically on the high school structure. So I looked at a couple of different things, and I'll break it out for you. I'm sure it's not shocking to you, they are not all the same, and so that, I believe, is why I was asked to comment on it. Some of our schools, so two of our schools have a designated college counselor, North High and Central High. They each have five counselors, one of those is a designated college counselor. The other four at North are organized via grade level, the other four at Central are organized via the alphabet. At South High and West High, they have not designated their counselors a college counselor among them, so South High has six based on enrollment, West High has five based on enrollment. Those are split up in their entirety via the alphabet, and they, all of the counselors do some college and career work with their students, and they have a lower caseload to be able to do that. I looked at the research of alpha versus grade level, there really isn't anything that says one is better than the other by and large. What it did say is that, you know, the counselors themselves have to be comfortable with it because there's pros and cons to both systems. So we have done a good job there and let our, the schools that wanted to choose grade level choose it, and the ones that wanted to be alpha got to choose to do that, and that seems to be working out for us. The designated college counselor, the first place that I went to look for research was to our national organization there, that's called the National Association of College Admissions Counselors, or MACAC, which is kind of fun to say. They did a study in 2014 that I thought was really interesting, where they talked about a designated college counselor. They first stated, and the one big statement that they made was that students and families are going to need help with this transition. They are going to need help to apply to college or to figure out what they want to do after high school. So high schools should offer that help, their parents and students are going to benefit from help. They also asked public and private schools two questions. One was, how much time do you spend on college counseling? The public school response across the country was that the public schools spent 22% of their time on college counseling, and private schools responded that they spent about 55% of their time on college counseling. They also asked the same schools, who of you has a designated person whose only job is to do college and career counseling? Of the public schools, there were 30% that had either half-time or full-time position dedicated just to this, and among private schools, 73% said that they had a position dedicated just to that. I commented on that because a lot of our parent comments about this were, hey, look at XYZ private school, and you should take a note from them, and it was, it's just clear that they're very different structures across the country. They did recommend also in this study that the ratio for a college counselor in order to be effective would be one college counselor to 250 students. Our Parkway data, as some of you know, we use a system called Naviance to help our students research colleges from the time they're in sixth grade all the way through 12th grade. When they use it, by the time they get to high school, they're using that to apply to colleges. Our data did indeed show that the schools that have a designated person in this position have more students logging on, have students visiting Naviance more than the schools that do not have that. So Central High is at about an average of 15 visits per student, their North High is at about 11 visits per student, South High about five visits per student, and West High eight or nine, between eight and nine visits per student. Our counselor ratios are something that we should really be proud of here in Parkway. So again, our national organization and our state organization give recommendations. Our national organization says that you should have one counselor for every 250 students. Currently, some of our schools meet that, not all. And our state organization says you should have one counselor for every 300 to 375 students. Currently, all of our schools meet that upper range of that, so we are well within that, and I'm not sure that's something that our counterparts in St. Louis, the St. Louis region, can brag about. I was also asked to comment on how counselors help with transition, so getting kids from pre-K to kindergarten, getting kids from fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth. The top three leverage points, and this is a survey of parents, students, and counselors themselves. The biggest thing parents and students says was, it made me feel so much better anytime I could get into the school and be in there, be introduced to people before I was actually going to school there. The number two thing they said was the classroom lessons from the counselor, so they go down to the level that they're transitioning, they do classroom presentations, talk about what that level of schooling will be like. And then third, the one-on-one conversation. So again, parents and students really appreciate it. Anytime a counselor was having a one-on-one conversation, that is structured at many levels so that they can at least have a brief one-on-one conversation with every single student, and we try to do that as much as possible. This is the satisfaction of transition from students, parents, and counselors. As you can see, by and large, we're doing a good job. Of course, we'd like every single person to be satisfied, and it's certainly something to continue working on, but by and large, most people happy with the way we're transitioning kids. This is, I was also asked to comment specifically on this course registration at the high school level. So these are the satisfaction levels for the enrollment for freshmen and enrollment for returning students. Again, by and large, most people happy with what we're doing. I will say that a comment I got from all three groups, students, parents, and counselors themselves, was, I'd really like more time to make this decision, and I'd like, the counselor said, I'd like more time with the students to meet one-on-one and go over their four and five-year plans. Right now, the barrier there is the master schedule timeline. So much has to do with those numbers at the high school. We decide staffing based on those numbers, so getting those in in a timely manner is important for a lot of reasons, and that's just one of them, and that's a barrier that we all share. I was asked in addition to comment on the social and emotional needs of our students. So we surveyed parents, students, and counselors as well on this. I'm not going to read it to you, but I do find one thing interesting, and that is that anxiety was the number one thing said by parents, students, and counselors at all three levels. This is not unique to Parkway. This is really a national, a national thing that we're seeing happening, students experiencing anxiety and stress at younger ages and at more severe levels. There are a lot of speculations about why that is, but we are no different. And I would say the other thing that we are seeing is just an uptick in general in the mental health needs of our students at younger and younger ages, the severity becoming more and more. That, again, would be commensurate with national data. Our counselors really want to respond to this, as I said, they are passionate people, they want to help every single student. This is just a smattering of the things that they would do, but it's important to remember that every single situation, every single student, every single family is unique, and our counselors are doing the best they can to do a personalized approach and a personalized response. So these are some of the tools they have in their toolbox, but they will use, you know, almost anything, they're going to great lengths to help students, again, just passionate people that want to get to all of our kids who need them. They have a couple of barriers to trying to help. One of them, I would say, is the same as anyone else that works in a school, they don't have enough time. And I don't think that's unique to us, but again, just their time, the student's time, the time that a student needs to be in classroom, should be learning academic content, all are barriers to how they can respond or how they do respond. In addition to that, the number of students we're seeing, as I said, and the severity of the issues that we're having. Because of that, and because of the personalized approach, that our parents said the one-on-one attention was really important to them. We do have some children's service fund agencies in our schools that have therapists that are meeting with kids one-on-one, kids have appointments with these therapists in the school, and it's a regular appointment that they have each week, and that allows them to be consistent and regular. We do not control the funding on that, and the funding was recently cut on that, so some of our schools have that resource, others that did not get it before the funding was cut were not able to get it, and that is nothing that we have control over. But I do want to say that our counselors do a good job of referring out when they need to, when it's outside of their scope, and even when they can, bringing that service to our students in the schools. I was asked in addition to comment on how students are referred to counselors. At the elementary level, you can see it's mainly school staff that are bringing kids down. At the middle school, self-referral or a peer referral, a peer would say, you know, my friend is, I think my friend's in trouble, I would like for you to see them, so I think that's pretty cool, our kids are taking care of each other there. But followed closely by the school staff. And then at the high school level, the self-referral and peer referral was by far the most. I was also asked to comment on how our counselors collaborate with our social workers. I first want to offer a piece of clarification about their job roles. So as I said, the counselor is someone who addresses academic, personal, social, and emotional needs. Every single student has access to a counselor, every student should have access to a counselor. They're really the first in line for an intervention when we need one. Hopefully, they have a relationship with the parent and the student, and that's someone that they feel comfortable going to, and they're the first line of intervention. So in that way, I think of them as our tier-one intervention for social and emotional needs. Our social workers, in contrast, provide mental health services for a more targeted number of students, and those students generally have more notable social and emotional needs. So in that way, they are a tier-two resource. Some of our students may not need that resource, they may be taken care of in tier-one. For both, the recommended ratio is one to 250 students, or if you're a social worker, one per building. The Parkway average for counselors right now is one to 267 students, whereas, in contrast, our Parkway average for social workers is one to every 2,687 students. That is a large caseload that they are carrying. So when I asked the question, how do y'all collaborate with each other, how's that going? Both groups said, hey, everybody's working their tail off, everybody is working hard, everybody is responding and passionate about getting to every single kid. What the counselor said was, it is impossible for the social workers, because they are spread so thin, to be a consistent resource for us and for our students in the schools. So I call on them, I hope they're available, but I don't know that they would always be available to be here when I need them. And again, it was not a malicious thing, it was just, that's just the reality of the ratio of them to the number of kids that they have. Our special services department, our counselors collaborate with them mainly on 504 plans, writing and implementing, and case managing. They also, though, work with chronically absent students, and the special services department also can help them write like behavior plans or power plans for our kids who are struggling. Their collaboration just brings forward a bit of a concern, our growing population in our schools, and as I've mentioned before, our students who have 504s and qualify for 504 and are asking for a 504 plan is only growing, and it's only looking to grow. Right now, our counselors are taking the request, they are largely writing the plan, they are case managing then the plan, which is all well and good because they want to help. However, the number is just growing so much that it is starting to impede their ability to do the things that they are supposed to be doing, the things that a school counselor is trained to do. It's also, I believe, preventing their ability to be proactive. So we saw that our curriculum was low and our individual planning was high, and I think that a lot of that individual planning is paperwork for 504, which, again, is a great thing that the counselor needs to be a part of, but also just not within our, what the state says we are supposed to be doing and not what our national organization says we're supposed to be spending so much time on. I was also asked about our connection with the district counselors. My counselor said that the district counselors come to IEP meetings, they help them access community resources for students, they sometimes meet with individual kids. But what I found in the comments was, number one, there's three of them for the whole district, so the same issue as with the social workers, hard to be a consistent resource when there's only three of you for so many students. But also that they have a really different job role than our school counselors, and sometimes I think that calling both counselor is confusing for people, so potentially clarifying job roles would be helpful. So with that, my recommendations. To add social workers and counselors to respond to the growing social and emotional needs of our students, we would like to work with our special services and TLA departments to educate about 504 and understand how that responsibility might be shared. We'd like to structure our social workers and district counselors to allow them to be consistently in schools and perhaps also some job role clarification along with that. We'd like to add additional high school staff focused on college and career, and we'd like to work with administrators to at least discuss and communicate what the master scheduled timeline means so that maybe parents and students and counselors themselves are not so frustrated by it. So with that, I welcome your questions.
Wow, that's a good question on Naviance, because I think it's one of the great tools that students should take advantage of, especially when they're in college. So I believe the higher number is adopted, right, and Central is, seems to be using a lot? Do you know why South High doesn't seem to be using a lot?
You know, I don't, I don't know if I have the answer to that. I know that I got lots of comments about the two college and career counselors that were really positive, it was nice to have someone to for sure go to, and I wonder if it could potentially be, you know, that national study showed public school counselors are spending about 22% of their time on college counseling. So I just wonder if, how much, and I know that when I was a counselor too, your best intentions, you lay out your day, I'm going to work on, you know, this application with this student and this or this or this, but then a crisis pops up and that changes. And so, you know, for me at least, I wonder, and this is my own speculation, does it clear your schedule to be working on that for certain when you have other people that handle the crises and the things of that nature?
Thank you. Thanks for the great question.
I'll start with one thing that you handed on first.
Sure.
Why such a spike in 504 programs?
I, you know, I know that a law was changed, so I have my, she's going to cut me, I had Alyssa Graff come for this very reason because she is our special services department leader, but there was a law that changed in 2008 that allowed access to more students, and I also know that as parents, students, and doctors as well become more aware of the law, it's just saying like, oh, I can qualify for this, and I can have this, I may need this, and so this may be just a combo of more people are qualifying and more awareness about it.
I concur. So in January of 2008, the Americans with Disabilities Amendment Act was passed as a federal law, and it expanded the definition of who is a person with a disability, which also affected the eligibility intersection by before. There's a variety of reasons, which I won't go into right now, of why more people qualify under that law. I will be presenting on Monday to superintendent's action team to... I will be presenting on Monday to superintendent's action team to dive deeper into this. And the other reason would be increased knowledge and awareness of the law, which increases the parent requests and the referrals from physicians.
How does Mrs. Say, a superintendent, Tommy B., we, this isn't just Parkway. I think there's just more awareness now about 504s and we're all, all districts are similar to that. And they are.
Is there a particular?
Section 504 covers any person who has any type of an impairment. It could be a physical impairment, a health impairment, a learning impairment, developmental, emotional, mental health. So it covers quite a wide variety of any type of an impairment that could qualify as a disability. Our number one disability under 504 for Parkway students is ADHD, followed by mental health, and then physical impairments. I'm sorry, health impairments.
That's all I have on that question. The other question I wanted to ask, I'm going to move back to your transition slide.
Sure.
Slide that talks about transitions and the opinions of transitions at the same grade levels. So what I thought was interesting about this is the students and parents' satisfaction with it is relatively the same for counselors. However, parents and students are a blur. Did you get any more insight into what parents and students are thinking there as opposed to why counselors are thinking it's going better, that parents and students are more going to look at?
Yeah, you know, not a ton. I mean, I will say that some of, some of this, the comments were things that are not under the control of the counselor. So it was like the timeline of, that I have to choose my courses or, you know, all I got was a popsicle at the popsicles with the principal thing. And some of it was like things that just were not under the control of the counselor and/or a big one was, I wish you would print the course guide for us. And another was, I, what was the other one? But it was just things that the counselors like really don't either decide or have control over. So I thought that that was really interesting. But that was, you know, otherwise than that, I don't have much insight, other than they all agreed they would like more time with, with the, for the transition, dedicated to the transition.
And then the other matter is what the time is, the high school registration and that issue there. Is there any way that the parents and students can receive their registration information before winter break? That's been some talk in the high school arena. Then it would be helpful to have that period of time to talk about that because then you come off of winter break and maybe one or two weeks afterward, then you're informed that you have to do registration and some schools only have one week to do that registration. And one you could have that whole time for winter break. So I don't know, that would be a helpful piece of information.
Sure. Thank you for that. The only thing I'll comment on with that is that some people said, I want it to be earlier and other people said, it's too early. They forgot what they requested by the time we get there. So it's just, it's, I feel like it's a bit like the master calendar where you just almost like struggle to make everyone happy with it. But I do think that's a good idea since everyone is asking for more, everyone that is directly involved seems to be asking for more time.
And then my other question that had to do with training of counselors. And what are our criteria for counselors coming into our district with the qualification and training that they have? And the reason why I ask this is because I was doing LGBTQ matters. They had suggested that counselors be well-trained and be able to deal and manage with LGBTQ students for their particular specific concerns. So I'm wondering, are our counselors trained in those areas to be able to help that cohort?
Sure. So all of our counselors have to have a master's in education with a specialty in school counseling. In general, the schools that we pull from are, Seoul is a big one and they are what's called K-Crep accredited. I know that they have, because of that, they have at least one course on diversity in general. We also pull largely from Missouri Baptist and Lindenwood. They also working on their K-Crep accreditation. And I would imagine, though I can't say for certain, that they also at least have one class in general on diversity. That's also a great question though, because it is something that they help with every day.
So talking about career and college planning, and I'll, why would a school decide to have a college counselor dedicated to persons one who would not?
Well, I think some of it was that the two schools that made that decision said, we want a dedicated person to do this for the reason that I already named, which was, I go in to work, I have a plan to meet with a student, write the recommendation letter, get this application submitted, and a crisis comes up and we prioritize student safety first and foremost. And that's just the way it always should be and is. And so that always goes down to the bottom of the list. So I think those two schools that decided that said, we want someone that's dedicated to this that can always put it first. The other two schools felt like that might be too much of a burden on just one person. So that ratio of one to 250 is important to remember that that's what our national organization recommended because we are well above that in the two schools that do have it. So the two schools that decided not to do it, it's because they would like to share that responsibility in, you know, writing direct letters and they felt like they could be more effective if each of them were doing a piece of it.
So with the schools that do not have a dedicated person, the students are guaranteed some time with a counselor to kind of plan for their college experience as well as go through the application process and get that individual dedicated time?
Well, all of our schools, our curriculum largely centers around that, around the college process, especially the junior and senior levels. So that definitely each school, each student would get instruction on that with that. Otherwise than that, I think the counselors do their best to meet with students one-on-one. Could I guarantee to you that every single student was met with about that? No.
Well, that's a really important part of being a junior and senior.
I agree.
Well, and I think a lot of parents would go with a private college counselor, you know, for that purpose because they don't get the services in the public schools. And that's the difference between a private and a public school because in a private school, they get guaranteed that they're also paid for, we know that.
Right, right. And, you know, I agree with you and I think that's why that was one of our recommendations was like, this is so important. And at the same time, if you were the person in the office and you had a student who had a, had a crisis going on and their safety was in danger and you had to make an appointment to meet with a student about their college plans, you know, that's the reality that they're faced with every day of like, I have to prioritize this. And so I think that's the, you know, that's the interesting part about it.
I totally understand that. A party's come first from that standpoint in terms of crises. And that's why your recommendation, your first recommendation is so important.
Yep.
That question I have, that, that social operation?
Sure.
That's pretty staggering. If those are the kids that are having the highest.
That is all of our kids. So I mean, I guess that ratio could be slightly misleading in that, that is, I took the number of social workers we have and use that with our entire population, even though they're not meant to serve our entire population. However, it is, yes, it is a staggering ratio.
So imagine that turnover is.
It's, you know, it's, it is not actually. And I will say, and I don't know if you have what you hear.
Well, what's that person?
Yeah. And again, really passionate people, passionate about helping kids. And I think it's also because we do treat our social workers really well. So Dr. EJ oversees the social workers and she gave me some ratios that exist in nearby districts. But what's misleading about some of their ratios, like in Rockwood, they, we pay them...